Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Trustees, Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, for November 12th, 2025. It is seven o'clock. Please silence your cell phones if you have them. And Ed, would you follow the roll, please?
Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Trustee Sturm.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
Trustee Rose now.
Here.
Trustee Rice.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
Mayor Fay.
Here.
Please join me on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Let's see, as you have before you a proposed agenda for tonight. We're, we'd like to propose one change in it, which is to exchange items C and C. That's the only change that I'm aware of. Does anyone have any other changes they'd like to propose? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion. Second.
I guess Swisher and Pike. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. And now we have the consent agenda, which has lots of minutes from the Historic Preservation Commission meetings, as well as the planning and zoning meeting and our most recent meeting. There's also a police chief report and planning director report and town clerk. In addition to that, there's the resolution from the Board of Trustees, appointing Ryan Doak as a regular voting member of the tree board. And we appreciate our citizens participating in those committees. Are there any items that you'd like to see come out of the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Okay.
So Rowe and Swisher? And all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Now we get to the part of our meeting, which is for public comment. We're entitled to make a comment of up to three minutes. And if you did not yet sign in on this clipboard, I'd like for you to do so. Otherwise, you won't be able to speak. Is there anybody who would like to speak who didn't sign in yet? Okay, then we will start with Thomas Brown. Please give your name and whether you are a resident of the Town of Buena Vista.
Okay, Tom Brown, and I'm a resident of Buena Vista. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Today I want to talk about a proposal to establish an environmental advisory. Establishing an environmental advisory board would provide leadership, vision, and advice in support of town and Board of Trustees activities involving the protection, use, and restoration of natural resources and open space. The proposed board functions may include: using a wide range of information and approaches to local government, the local government addressed on environmental issues, laws, regulations, and programs; investigating and studying pollution of air, land, and water in the community for elimination, mitigation, and reduction of these pollutants; promoting local and regional long-range environmental planning; exploring emerging technologies and sustainable environmental solutions; reaching residents through education, publications, and citizen science opportunities; advocating for open space planning, preservation, and habitat protection; providing an open forum for the community to address environmental concerns, questions; creating and maintaining environmental database of town open spaces; seeking reductions of invasive plant species and excessive noise; engaging in local community and nonprofits to address upper Arkansas environmental concerns and issues. The Environmental Board would adhere to the Board of Trustees objectives and directives, follow guidance from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, seek direction from Planning Department, Public Works, Parks, and Recreation Departments, the County Health Department, Code Enforcement, and obtain advice from various towns and commissions and advisory boards. Please consider joining the communities of Carbondale, Commerce City, Vale, Boulder, Thornton, Westminster, Ridgeway, who have all made the smart decision to establish an environmental advisory board within their community. In conclusion, I very much hope that the Buena Vista Board of Trustees will formally consider and move to approve this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Susie Kelly? Please give us your name and whether you-
I'm Susie Kelly, and I live on County Road 319. I am not, do not live in the town, although I lived here for 20 years. Does that count? Seventy years ago. I'm here for the Buena Vista Heritage. We are a nonprofit, and you all know that. The courthouse has been ours now for 51 years almost. And I sent you all a paper. I think you have a copy of that. We, last summer, our executive director, who is Lisa Wagner, she spoke to you, and we got a $10,000 grant from you, which we used to get a professional electrician to do an electrical study of that courthouse. And they found a number of problems, which is not surprising since it was built in 1882. I think the electricity was updated probably in 1975, so, because that was when the school quit using it, about '73. Anyhow, the $10,000 you gave us helped with that professional electric engineer, and now is applied to a state historic fund for $151,000, which we have to raise 25%. So we have to raise $38,000. And we've raised 22 already, and I think we still have some coming in and some nice $1,000 grants, and one person gave us $5,000. And we did get $4,000 through Sangre de Cristo for the community foundation. So that was a big help, too. The last update shows that we have $18,000, but I talked to Lisa today, and I think we're up to $22,000. Once this emergency grant is completed, we will have to get a, this is just an emergency to fix what was smoking and where the problem was. Then we're going to have to redo all the electricity, but we are eligible for these grants from the state historic fund. We've gotten about 10 grants in the last eight years from the state historic fund. I mean, big grants, like a million dollars for the new roof and the cupola. And we have to raise a fourth of it. So a million dollars is still bad, because you have to raise 250. But we have been able to do that. So we know that it's going to be hard to completely do the electrical system in the courthouse, but we will be eligible for those grants. So it's been open every summer. We have thousands of guests that come in. We also have things going on all during the year. We have dance lessons, we have lectures, we have weddings. We have all kinds of things happening in the courthouse. We do tours for the elementary kids, and they love it. They love to come and see the model train. That's their favorite thing. We are asking the town to consider a standing annual donation to us in a $10,000 fund, so that we don't have to come and ask you all the time. I promise that I personally will not come and ask anymore if you decide to put us on the annual fund. You won't have to see me. That'd be good. Anyhow, with this money, then we can use that to leverage against these grants that we get. And so that is our request, and that's why I gave you all a paper, so you can read about and discuss it. And thank you very much for the first $10,000.
Thank you, Susie. Next, we have Chris Williams.
Hi, my name is Chris Williams. My wife and I live south of town off Rodeo Road, so we're not in the town, but our address is Buena Vista, Route 11. I'm here tonight to request that the trustees approve reopening the water fill station on Greg Drive. My understanding, I've had several conversations with Mr. Williams about, under the closure, my understanding is that those issues that led to it closing back in June have been resolved, that the demand has dropped, the infrastructure has doubled, almost doubled to capacity to collect and process water. So from my understanding, there's no mechanical reason or no system reason why it couldn't be reopened. So I'm asking that y'all consider reopening it right away. Our, we, our property is at over 9,000 feet. We live up on Mount Princeton. Right or wrong, we got our building permit, the county based, getting the permit on the readily, ready access of that station. And when it closes without any notice in June, it kind of put us in a bind for water. So in another conversation, Sean has shared that there's a couple of things that y'all probably still need to talk about, like language for the website or the new rig structure. And my request would be if you could please open it immediately and have those conversations maybe after and resolve that. And then, anyway, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Diane Williams.
I'm Diane Williams, wife of Christopher. As he just addressed, I want to say ditto, but I also want to say that, you know, we've been building log home on our property, and we have no access to water other than that water fill station. Our neighbors adjacent to us are all on their second wells, and they paid $50,000 or $60,000 to dig those. And we are not in a position to do that right now while we're trying to build our house. We are in the mercy of our neighbors right now, helping us out to be able to have water. But we are, you know, asking for your mercy to please open that water fill station, so we don't have to worry about that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll talk about that at the end of the meeting. So, okay. Right. Okay, that concludes our public comment.
Do you have one hand raised online?
Okay.
Andy Trash?
Okay. Go ahead, Andy. Can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Andy P. Trash. My wife and I own the home at 760 East Pine Street, and we are not currently residents of the town. I know y'all have your plates full, but I wanted to bring up ordinance number nine again and our application for short-term rental license. We'd like to request that STR licenses be allowed for homes added to the waitlist before ordinance number nine went into effect. In previous trustee meetings, when the topic was brought up, it seemed like the discussions would get sidetracked or, and our question wouldn't be answered. We weren't concerned about the legality of the ordinance, nor were we asking that the ordinance be changed. We were just asking if it's an easy solution and agreeable to all sides for STR licenses to be issued to those of us added to the waitlist before the ordinance went into effect. So again, the solution doesn't require that the ordinance be changed or revisited even. It simply allows STR licenses to be issued to those of us added to the waitlist before the ordinance went into effect. So we're asking if it would be possible to have it added to the agenda of the next trustee meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. So now we will hear from the airport manager, Chandra.
Chris Martez, and he is here on behalf of the Airport Advisory Board to give the short presentation.
Oh, great.
Hey, folks. Good evening. Personally, I start by apologizing. I think all the other advisory boards presented two weeks ago at your meeting, and our board was unfortunately not prepared to do so. So here I am tonight. I won't take a whole lot of your time. I think it's a difficult sort of annual check-in with you guys, but I just want to talk really briefly about some of the stuff that happened in 2025, the accomplishments that we have going on, the probably the biggest, most important things that I know you guys hear about all the time, you're very aware of, but I can't help but reiterate the value of the airport, especially as it comes to the pipeline firefighting efforts. I think we had another great example. This is the second year running. We've had a great example of the airport serving its exact most important purpose, providing emergency services and ability for those firefighting aircraft to come in from the front range, be locally based for the time while they're working on a fire. And we had a couple of those this year, one that everybody very, very familiar with in July. So my understanding, and I think the, the airport's proximity to the fire, the ability for those aircraft to come in and be, you know, fueled and things like that, to work so closely to the fire was absolutely critical in getting that fire put out as quickly as possible and saving structures that we did. So I know you guys know that. I know that you hear it. I'm going to say it every single time. I hope I don't happen every year that we don't have fires, but to the extent you, it's one of the most important things that we do there. In the same way, we also had several, and I'm sure Chandra can give you the specific numbers, the Reach Medevac helicopter uses the airport quite a bit. We had several of those transfers, emergency situations that brought patients out to the front range to get medical services that also supported search and rescue efforts, again, essentially saving lives in the proximity of the airport here in Buena Vista. It's absolutely critical to that. In addition, just overall, we've had consistent growth of operations. And when I say operations, I mean flights, right? Those are takeoffs and landings of all kinds of aircrafts. So, you know, we're growing with the town, airport's use is growing with the town. No surprise to anybody. We're certainly seeing a big influx and high growth in traffic, so folks come in and out of town for weekends and things like that. The concerts have often been driving traffic at the airport. Other interesting things, as you obviously know, airport manager succession. Chandra's now our airport manager. Happy to have her. We're very excited to be working more closely with Chandra and kind of use this opportunity for the airport advisory boards, sort of reset some of our priorities, some of the communication protocols and things that we use with airport staff and other town staff. And so we're excited for that. The North Apron Rehab is our capital project for the year, funded mostly through grants, and that just wrapped up relatively recently. If they, I think they're done, done, right?
Very.
Yeah, maybe a little bit of painting or something left to do, but otherwise pretty much done. That's a significant rehab of a bunch of pavement in the airport. The terminal building has had HVAC issues for years, and Chandra, with her work and help, I think from Nick, we're able to get the phase one of that HVAC system sort of repair and upgrade kind of done this year, which is really key to making sure that even for our advisory board, we have somewhere we can sit in the summer and have our meetings that that's in a thousand degrees. So pretty fun. Also, you guys all voted to approve new minimum standards for commercial operations at the airport. We also voted to approve new rules and regulations. Those documents hadn't been updated for the airport, I think, since about 2008, and they've been updated now. And so another big lift from the Airport Advisory Board and airport staff to get those things done. Looking forward to 2026. I'm just going to touch on a couple of the most critical things that we're hoping to kind of get funded. A number of these things that you guys are very familiar with, you know, we contribute local matches to much larger grants from folks like the FAA and CDOT. But the AWAS, if you're familiar, it's Automated Weather Observation System. It's the thing that reports out the weather at the airport, most importantly, temperature, wind, those sort of things, so that the pilots can, A, plan ahead before they take off, so they know what sort of weather they're coming into, and then also end the immediate sort of terminal area. The pilots use that system consistently for safety to make sure that they know and understand all the weather, and especially as they're landing, choosing which runway, which direction to land on the runway, and those sort of things. Had quite a bit of issue, spent quite a bit of money trying to keep that system up to date. At the end of the day, it's ultimately just sort of old at this point, and added service life. And so we're going to need to replace that. I know it's one of the most critical projects on Chandra's list, and I understand that we have CDOT funding pretty well lined up at this point. And so it comes down to a local match to make that happen. Similarly, we've talked quite a bit in the past about the fuel system. You know, short of actual, like, airport and runway pavement, the fueling system is probably the second most important piece of infrastructure that we have, because most airplanes that land here, you ultimately need some fuel to take off again and go wherever they're going. It's also one of the most, actually the single most important part of how we generate revenue at the airport by selling that fuel. You sell Jet A out of trucks, but we can also sell a little bit of, you know, for a single-engine piston, smaller airplanes out of that fuel island. And so we have some inspections that we need to do to determine the future service life of those and potentially plan for updates and upgrades that are likely coming down sometime in the near future. And also phase two of that HVAC system to make sure that we're keeping the building up just enough where we can. Couple of other things we're going to be working, a little bit of turnover in the Airport Advisory Board itself. We had a couple of meetings this year where we unfortunately didn't have a quorum in attendance, and so that's kind of probably thrown off some of the meeting minutes and things like that, that you got the North will see in your packets. And so apologies for that, but it's been one of our priorities here this winter, making sure we get a full roster of advisory board members and try to basically just increase engagement. Like I said before, very happy to be working with Chandra and Nick now, and he uses all this good opportunity to kind of reset the advisory board's roles, the positions and things like that that we're going to have gone forward. And then the last bit is really just a request. It's a very, very broad request at this point, but we will have a lot of big projects coming to the airport in the future. And when I say in the future, it's like in '27, '28, '29, '20, '30, including a major runway rehab and things like that, that would ultimately require more grant matching from the town. And so, you know, Chandra has all the details of those things, but this is more of just kind of a flag to let you guys know that I expect we'll be needing a little more attention from administration, from trustees, staff, and folks like that, as we kind of plan for some of those bigger upgrades to the airport that are required to continue the operations that we need. So that's really all I have for you today. I'm happy to take questions. I feel my contact information on here. Dan Court, right, who was our former chair of the airport board, is no longer on the board. So if you have, I likely would have reached out to him and probably interacted with him more, but please feel free to reach out to me going forward until we kind of, like I said, reset the airport advisory board itself and the director positions or officer positions on the court. So that's all I have, but I have to take any questions.
So in the budget that you provided to us, did you include that the AWAS amount that we, that the town would pay?
I think that's right. That's included in the budget, right?
Absolutely included.
And the inspections on the tanks?
Correct.
Questions for Chris? Number? Guess we're all set?
Easy. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have Betsy?
Uh, we do.
Hi, everyone. I'm not sure how to turn my video on. But maybe I can just talk without my video. I'm Betsy Dittman. I'm the executive director of the Chaffey County Community Foundation, and we are, I am sorry I couldn't be there in person. We've had a virus running through my house, and I didn't want to spread the wealth around. So we're, I'm doing it remotely today, but I do always love to come to the trustee meetings and connect with folks. We are here to submit our proposal to the trustees for consideration of funding for the 2026 community grant cycle. We are hoping for $61,000 in the budget for this, and we look forward to continuing the great partnership that we have to, to really thoughtfully administer these funds into the community. I can share a few changes for next year from what we've done in the past is, what we've gotten a lot of feedback from our nonprofit community, and we've also sort of exploded in grant processes in the past few years. And they really have requested a more streamlined approach to funding, so it's less confusing. You don't inadvertently miss a deadline. And it's, it's an easier way to make funding decisions that are not siloed and are more referencing all of the funds available. And so, you know, in the past, we have done a combined process with Salida and BV, and now we'll be adding a few more grant programs into that, including Monarch Mountain Community Grants, the Sangre de Cristo Electric Association Community Grants, and the Community Foundation's Community Grant Fund itself. We think that this will be a much more streamlined approach, and we'll give, make much more strategic funding decisions as we're looking at all of these funds together as opposed to separately. We will still be very conscious of the fact that BV funds need to go to BV organizations and prioritize those that are serving a high number of BV residents. Are there any questions?
Some don't know about questions, but Maggie Height has, has done this for a couple of years, where she's been the representative from the Board of Trustees. And Maggie could explain that process to you all if someone else is interested in doing it. If they're not interested, then Maggie has said that she would do it for another year.
It really is a fun process. I had a really good time doing it. If somebody's curious about it and wants to do it for sure, I think it's always great to have more representation. Time commitment, you know, the meetings are really well scheduled and well thought out, and Betsy and Anna do a great job of keeping it on track. And the biggest part is like the research, right? There's a considerable amount of grants that came through last year, and I would imagine it will be the same this year, next year, and every year thereafter. So if anybody else is interested, I really, well, I'm just doing it at all whatsoever. And I really did enjoy it, and I enjoyed the team, but I don't want to take the opportunity away if somebody else has interest.
Does anyone want to arm wrestle?
I did it the year before. It was awesome. It was lovely. Yeah.
Did it a couple of years.
Yeah.
And Peter did.
It was a fun time.
It's really interesting to learn what the different nonprofit organizations are doing. So I don't want people to miss out on an opportunity. So if you want to do it, talk to Maggie. She'll work out the logistics of the arm wrestling.
It feels like I'm kind of uncontested at the moment. And I'm okay with that, too, because, again, I really did enjoy it, and I love working with Betsy and Anna. So no, it's not a problem with me at all whatsoever. But if anybody changes their mind, y'all let me know.
Well, we would love to have Maggie back as well. You've been such a great resource for the committee. And, you know, it is helpful to have folks that have done it a couple times or have done it before, because there's a bit of a learning curve, I think, the first time we found. And so, you know, always welcome to have repeat reviewers back.
A fan crowd.
Yes, it's mostly done remotely.
Oh, almost all of it, yeah. The only meeting that we did in public was a follow-up, and just because we all decided it was easier, but almost all of it was remote, which was really nice. Made it a little bit more flexible. And Betsy, it starts in January, right?
Yes, so the applications will go out, the applications will be announced in January, and then organizations will have a chance to apply by, let's see, late March is that will be the deadline. And so then the, the real work then will begin in early March of reviewing the applications, but that is work that can be done on your own time, whenever you want to do it, whether it's, you know, 8:00 AM or 2:00 in the morning or whatever works for you. Because it is, it's a portal that you log in with your own account, and you can review at your own pace. And then we do schedule meetings throughout that time. But we do that once we have the full committee and do it in the initial training together so that we can make sure that we find dates that work for everybody.
Unless somebody comes after me for an arm wrestle, Betsy, it sounds like you got me again this year. Great.
Yes, I'm excited.
Thanks, Betsy, and thank you for not bringing the virus.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, that's good. So we will move on to item B then, which is the co-response presentation from Sarah. from Sarah. Obviously, it looks like you have some others here with you.
And Mike, Renee, and Casey Andrew Will. I do, I'll just start over prefacing that I thought I had. This is maybe longer than it needs to be. And if anyone gets bored, just kind of give me the cue to like keep it going. I thought it might be helpful to start off explaining just to the general public, like what co-response is, why are we here? Why are we asking for money? Like, what are we doing? What are our goals? The number one goal of a co-response program is jail criminal justice deflection. We'll talk about in the next slide, the difference between deflection and diversion, but the idea is that we're not even allowing people who the criminal justice system can't serve productively into that system and trying to treat them with a mental health response when there's a mental health or substance use disorder on board that's driving that issue. Another big component is de-escalation, obviously. Clinical response, like us clinicians and law enforcement are highly trained and very skilled in reading and understanding behaviors, but from polar opposite ends of the spectrum, the way we interpret that behavior is very different. And that is kind of how co-response has even come about is their interpretation of what is happening and our interpretation is what is happening. It could be vastly different. And then we have a way to collaborate and staff on scene, which in theory, hopefully prevents use of force, which can be a law enforcement agency's kind of biggest liability. We're trying to provide the appropriate responder and response to the call. A really like kind of ridiculous exaggerated example I like to give is when you're ceiling fan breaks, do you call a plumber? No. We've been trained from a really early age to call nine one when things don't feel right, when things feel scary, when things feel off, right? And we're doing a good job of the public of doing that. And I don't think we need to send any other message. However, the result of that is we get a lot of calls into law enforcement that they're not criminal. There's really like, by the time law enforcement get there, the question is, why are we here again? How can we help? Like, what's the, like, what are we doing here other than providing, like, making sure the scene is safe? Once that scene is safe, then what? Not law enforcement stop to follow up and make sure the elderly individual that was wandering that night has a place to sleep tomorrow night, right? Like, they're not doing that ongoing follow up and ensuring some life follow through. Another big component is reduction in overuse and dependency on emergency systems. So you you have people in our community who, you know, use our emergency room as primary care, who use nine one one as their warm line because there is no one else for them. They don't have family, they don't have friends, they don't, they're not well connected to resources. These individuals typically aren't very skilled in navigating complicated systems. That's where we come on board. We're gladly, we'll gladly step in and help them navigate those complicated systems and get them to the right place ongoing and reduce that dependency on emergency systems. I'm going to go into more detail, there are a whole slide on follow up and case management, but that's really the meat and potatoes of what we're doing. Is that kind of individualized support to help get them off of the nine one one radar. And then a very positive unintended outcome of co-response is the cross training. Like when I came into co-response three plus years ago, both myself and law enforcement came to this program, a lot of hesitancy and a lot of like, why are you here and what is your role and what are you doing? I think Dean can speak to this. That does, that nearly doesn't exist, I think, anymore. When I come on scene, people I am there, what we're working towards, that there's a tool trust between the two that we know, like each other's role, they understand what limits I have, I understand the limits they have. And it creates a lot of compassion for each other and a lot of understanding of we're approaching this differently and let's meet in the middle to have a good outcome for everyone. Deflection versus diversion. So like I said before, deflection has the idea that we don't even put people in the criminal justice system where that system is not going to serve them because potentially the driving force of what could be seen as a, you know, charged as a crime is a mental health disorder or substance use disorder. And if there's a way we can treat that without putting them through a criminal justice system, we'd like to try to do that. Obviously, that's not the case for every call. So there are plenty of calls that that's not even an option. You know, some of bigger calls basically then is resulting in felony. Likely there will be a charge. Diversion programs aren't bad. They serve a purpose. They're really good, especially for these bigger charges. They do kind of force treatment in certain ways. But when you're looking at like really minor misdemeanor crimes, what typically happens? So like a good example is someone who gets booked and charged on false reporting. They call nine one one, use it as their soft line, right? Like, they don't have a lot of support systems, they're not on medications, they're using nine one one inappropriately, they get charged for false reporting. They get booked into jail, they're usually PR bonded out very quickly in a matter of hours. They don't actually sit in jail. But now there is this whole court process that has to take place. They have to be assigned a public defender usually if they can't afford it then. They are using their money to bond out, which is, you know, a lot of times these individuals are on disability or low income SSI. They have multiple court hearings. Sometimes they're assigned a Bridges Liaison, which is a mental health diversion program, which is covers the entire eleventh judicial district. So it's a, covers a lot of territory. And they get put up for competency. If they do not pass that competency evaluation, that charge is dismissed and it's like nothing ever happened. And in that entire process, they still have not gotten an adequate mental health or substance use intervention. So we're still using a ton of resources and dollars to send them through the system when adequate intervention hasn't been performed. In some of these bigger charges, like there is forced treatment, a lot of times we have a forensic hospital, that's where these cases end up a lot of times. There is currently no substance use diversion program in our county right now. We used to have a really robust one. It was really well renowned. That went away. So we don't even have that option for that. And there are drawbacks to diversion. If you haven't been successful in one program previously, like you might not be allowed to get into the next one. There'll be a lot more about that, but in the interest of time, I'll keep going. Can you go to? Okay, um, period response versus secondary response. So when our responses held at Solista, we were a secondary responder model. The kind of gold standard of co-response is period response. What you want is a deputy and a clinician together. The idea is that that deputy is not seen as a patrol unit. So they are only taking calls that are relevant to co-response. So your mental health calls, welfare checks, suicidal subjects, stuff like that. So they are dedicated to that scene. So we, the idea is that we, that team is relieving patrol so that they can get back to their normal job duties and go out fight crime and protect the public, right? So we have a unit specifically designed to handle these calls. It is the gold standard because you can send that unit first on scene. So us clinicians, case managers, we never go on scene without law enforcement. And so we're often waiting to be called in secondary response model, model, you're waiting to be called out, which means that person is already talking to law enforcement for twenty or so minutes. You get there, they talk. That's, and then you go to the hospital, they talk to someone else for twenty or thirty minutes. So just kind of like continuing the conversation, which if you know anything about trauma response, that's not a good thing to have to have someone tell their story repeatedly over and over. So period response model, that unit just gets there first. And hopefully patrol doesn't even have to go to those calls. In a lot of situations, they do because we're worried about safety or there's potential for weapon or violence. But then we can relieve them, they can get off scene. I thought it would be good to talk about this because I've gotten some questions on this, like, what is the difference? So we have this already? So kind of, and not really. In our county, we have two mental health crisis response units. So one is mobile crisis, one is co-response. One is now housed, co-response is now housed at the J County Sheriff's Office. It used to be at Solista, we just moved over. Mobile crisis is housed at Solista. So we kind of do the same things. We're clinicians, we go out on scene. The difference with mobile crisis versus co-response, the one of the big differences is mobile crisis response to anyone and everyone in the community. So you can call at midnight tonight and say, I want to talk to someone having a panic attack. They try to keep the cops from coming. That's their, that's their goals, right? We don't have, want to have. Don't need to. Not always the case. Sometimes it required that, but that's the goal. They also cover a much larger territory. So they cover Solista's region is Canyon City, West Cliff, Slida, one of us up to Leadville. So they have a two hour response window to get to any of those places. Versus co-response, we're just in JP County, we won't leave the county. There's very limited follow up and case management offered, and that has by and large been dictated by the state. They kind of say this is what you have to do in mobile crisis. You only get this many follow ups. We have almost no guardrails at the state at this point. They're just saying, you go out there and do what's needed in your community. So we can offer a lot of individualized case management and follow up. We can transport with discretion. So our clinicians, myself and Renee each have our own car. And when we don't need to have law enforcement transport someone and it's safe enough and the person is willing, we will bring them where they need to go. That could be the hospital, that could be the rack, that could be to their friend's house, that could be to the grocery store, whatever's going to help the crisis resolve. We also have that deputy. So if it needs to be a secure transport, like if it's, someone's going on a mental health hold and we don't need to involve EMS, then we have that deputy there to transport them. And again, freeze up patrol, but they don't have to make that commute. Mobile crisis does not transport for, I think, obvious good reasons. They are twenty four seven, three sixty five program. We are not. I'm open to the idea if someone wants to give us all of the money in the world. But for just funding restraints and call volume, we are we don't see the numbers at three in the morning, you know, in a year, we're going to look at data and say, where are the bulk of our calls coming from? Do we need to adjust scheduling for that? But the truth of the matter is we don't get a lot of the calls in the middle of the night. They happen, but there's not enough to more. Okay, I'm eating potatoes. So I didn't say this on the first slide, but one of the big goals of co-response as well is is reduction in recidivism. So we're not, hopefully not getting people in the criminal system. The only way, I don't need to be there, but also decreasing that kind of repeat of jail stays and recidivism does not happen on nine one one. That's my personal, you're not going to see that happen just because you sent a clinician on scene to a nine one one call. It happens with good follow up and care coordination after the fact. It's giving people to the right resources, right? Like, is the is there a crime that's being committed being driven by a lack of basic needs? Is it being driven by a mental health crisis? Is it be driven by a substance use disorder? Can we help get resources on board that stops that, right? That ends that cycle and hopefully prevents them from ever entering that system in the first place. So in our case management, we have kind of a loose thirty day case management window. I say loose because every person is unique. Every person has a different need. And for someone who really truly is been in a really bad place for a long time, they might need longer than thirty days to get to a goal. But we have generally some structure on it. If they meet their goal in thirty days, we'll offer them another thirty days. If they continue to meet goals, we'll continue to work with them. That also goes for clinical follow up. So if, you know, there's something that's not very case management heavy, but it's really high clinical needs and you've got someone who's like very acutely suicidal, but the hospital has not worked with them, we will continue to follow up them in a clinical capacity to make sure they're remaining safe. They have access to safety plans. They are accessing their resources well. So like more long term clinical work, maybe psychiatry stuff like that. So I put this on here because I wanted to highlight the kind of five calls we're talking about just automatically attaching to. So these are things we're already doing at the sheriff's department in the county. So anytime a call comes out and a co-response unit is on, that is mental health, welfare check, suicidal subject, suicidal attempt, or disruptive person, we are attaching to. Again, the idea of getting that patrol back on patrol quicker. So these are the trend analysis for BV over the last four years. I'll point out that welfare checks are a little bit different. That is a lot of times going to be officer and dispatch discretion, because I'd say about half of the welfare check calls are medical. It's my eighty nine year old grandpa who has stage four cancer, hasn't picked up his phone today. I don't know that we need a co-response unit to that, and we should do some discretion sending that unit out. But there are plenty of welfare checks that come in that we kind of don't know what's going on. It's like the person in the park that we've never seen before that's acting strange, talking to the sky. Yeah, we'll go check on them. That seems like it could be us. So this is what we've seen thus far since we've been operational at the sheriff's department. And I actually think I'll put a caveat on there that it's not totally accurate because we weren't operational on July first. We weren't actually operational until the end of August-ish. So roughly ten weeks, these are our numbers. Obviously, we have a lot more at the sheriff's office because we're automatically going to stuff right now. But I'll point out BV, the active dispatches and referrals. So that is like calls coming in nine one one or the non-emergency number or an officer picking up the phone and saying, I'm on scene here. I need you to come. So that is like an active go. I didn't label this right. Or resources doesn't accurately say what I'm trying to say, but what I, in the yellow, what I'm saying with referral sources are the types of follow up, are the follow ups and contacts we've had after active dispatches. So that would be three by minus ten, that's fifteen. So what that shows me is that we're getting maybe a call or so a week from BV PD, but we're having a lot more follow up and case management from those calls, meaning the individual is likely more acute, they have higher need, right? Like, we're really putting in some intensive work with them to get them off that nine one one system. I can breathe by this, and this is breakdown of like what are our calls looking like and where they're going, like what's resolved on scene, what goes to medical, what goes to the emergency room, the rack, stuff like that. It's actually too small for me to see from here, so I don't think I can explain this, but. So why we're asking for money. Some of you have heard this before to enter governmental meeting, but I'll tell you where we're at with funding. We have a behavioral health administration grant, we call them the BHA. We were awarded three hundred and one thousand. That's the most any program could be awarded. So I think eleven programs around the state were awarded. That funds a full time program manager position. That's me, full time clinician. Renee, half of another clinician, which we are hiring for, and forty four percent of a deputy. Everything else we need help with. That is enough. That's the case manager, half of a deputy, one full time deputy. And then all of our program related costs, which I know, an EHR, electronic healthcare record system is extremely expensive and needed when you're dealing with people's healthcare and medical records. When, so I'll give you some history too. So this, we had two grants when I was at Solista. That was funding that program. We had the BHA grant, and we had a federal grant through the Department of Justice. That grant was set to expire in September of this year. In October of last year, the BHA came to community mental health centers and said, we're no longer going to fund community mental health centers for co-response programs. We're only going to fund cities and counties, which we had all kind of seen the writing on the wall, right? It's changed a little bit of the statute language around this stuff to kind of infer that this change might be coming. Not think it would come a month before an election with six months notice. So that was a shock. And the county said they'd pick it up and they would also go for this DOJ funding. In April of this year, that DOJ funding was cut offline and has not come back. And I was hopeful it would come back within this year. I'm less hopeful now, given the recent shutdown. I am watching it closely, but I didn't see no progress. So that's why we're even in this position anyways, to come and ask you for money is that that DOJ grant was five hundred thousand dollars spread out over the course of three years, which would have really made us been able to stand up the program without really any need for financial support. And this is just another snapshot, but I sent you guys for transparency sake. The money we're asking for is not pulled out of thin air. It's broken down by percentage of population, percentage of nine one one calls and mental health, behavioral health calls over the past year. And we broke that down by county municipalities and. I think I shortened as much as I could.
So what, what sort of response have you gotten from the county? And from Salida on the funding?
Salida is willing to put in money as well. I there was a lot of talk about different pay structures and models. I in full transparency, they've asked to be removed from those conversations because I want to focus on just doing our job and co-response. That feels like the level I can't manage right now. And it's, you know, at the administrator's level. They deciding, I think, in the next three weeks, I could Um, they deciding, I think, in the next three weeks, I could. That's my last memory of what Andy told, Sheriff Work told me is three weeks they would deciding on the money. I don't know actual numbers. I know it's a fraction of what we asked for. The county is putting in as much as they possibly can and, you know, Sheriff Work has definitely stood behind that, like, we're going to do this one way or another. Even if it means we have to pivot and like, we have decreased hours or like response to things, um. It's a smaller team. If it's not staff as much, like, we're going to continue with regardless.
Dean, are you familiar with, with the program and whether it's helpful?
Yeah, yeah, it's absolutely helpful. Right now, the sheriff's office has been running it and it will continue to be run under the sheriff's office. But entities in the county like Bina Vista would be using and have been using the resources very successfully. So of course, there's a, a ask for some buy-ins. I think on our end, um, we've been asked for about sixty thousand. Um, I have to weigh and, and you as well, you know. Would it be more beneficial to have another officer out there? Um, sixty thousand is a lot of money. Um, so we've had a lot of those discussions. I've had a lot of talk with Andy. Um, I've worked, um, with Sarah the last couple of years and, um. When you get a mental health call, there's a lot of expectations on law enforcement. And I've been doing this and our officers have been doing this for years without co-response. And just like Sarah said so many times, we've encountered situations that either it's not a law enforcement situation. Or it's a repetitive issue because the person needs critical help that we're just not equipped to deal with. So even if we only have one co-response call a week, which is, um, some weeks it feels like it's been several, some weeks it's maybe one. I know before I got here, Renee was up here helping, um, Megan with the suicidal party. Um, when we need it, it's, it's worth its weight in gold. Um, Sarah has been excellent to work with. She's been tenacious in making the program successful. So for me, and I think my department, uh, my officers have really benefited from it. Um, I fully support it. It's been amazing and, I mean, I could tell you stories all day long about success stories. Get one real quick, um, Will Devine over there. Um, we have an open policy with, just like the sheriff's office, anytime a co-responder wants to do a ride-along, they, they have free reign to do so. And at the beginning of the summer, um, Will was doing a ride-along with Frazier. And they just checked on a lady that we'd been having some issues with and they found her lying on the floor and, and pretty serious condition. And were able to do what I, I consider some life-saving things that helped her. So it's just stories like that, that. Um, some of that's just missed with just the law enforcement side, that when you have that mental health and co-response. Um, supplementing us, it's, it's invaluable.
I'll dive deeper into that story too and tell you like what the meat and potatoes were. You know, Frazier was invaluable in saying like, let's just go check on her and see how she's doing. We get her to the hospital, um, and she had a bad enough UTI, she had to be admitted into the inpatient room with drip antibiotics. And that's where Will came in and worked really closely with the social work at the hospital, with the family saying, this is the history. This is what's happened the last two weeks with this woman, where we were very concerned about her well-being and her ability to live on her own. Like, let's get her some better care. Um, and that communication, she wouldn't have had that history of like, the longevity of our concern. Um, and her medical needs without that communication, right? And that went on for a week. That's not something. We're expecting Frazier, an officer, to like be at the hospital every day saying like, hey, let's do something of this. This is worrisome. Um, we picked that piece up for them.
Well, I, I just can picture that your services will be in even more demand if people are suffering. Questions for. For co-response and for the budget. I mean, th- this is one item that we don't have really in the budget yet.
That's correct.
I have a way to get it in there.
Yeah, I just wanted to say like, you know, I first met you, Sarah, a couple of years ago when you were the, the response program. So it's, uh, it's really exciting to see how far the program has come. And to see the support from all the law enforcement here in the valley. Um, it's really amazing to see the work that you all are doing. And I want to make sure we can fund this.
That's that good cross-training.
Uh, I've just got a question. I know Salida, they typically adopt their budget earlier than we do. And they're in a position where they probably won't be able to, uh, allocate the full amount requested and what it looks like. Is it scalable just based on how much you have? Or what's it look like if you get your full request opposed to no request or somewhere in the middle?
That's a great question. That's probably suited for that. Um, because I don't know, all I, the messages I've been sent are, we're going to stand behind this. Um, and the money's real, right? Like, you can only stand behind something as much as you can fund it. And so, um, you know, what I have repeatedly told them is I, I have no ego, ego about how robust we need to be. If funding says dictates like, we only have enough for this, you know, one co-response unit, or we only have enough to staff during the week. Then like, we'll do that. We'll start there, right? Like, I'm not, I'm willing to size it to what is. Like, can be done and. If it grows and we show need and people are have, you know, we have a plentiful year of funding, then like, we'll build on that. But I think we have to start somewhere. Oh, yeah.
What are the hours like now for you all?
Oh, great question. So in my dream world, we are staffed ten AM to ten PM. Actually, more like seven AM to ten PM, seven days a week. Um, so Renee currently works Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, ten AM to ten PM. I work Monday through Thursday, seven AM to five PM. So I cover those like early morning calls. Um, or anytime when he's on something and there's a second call, I'll go out. Wednesdays are kind of our big training day, so that's where we cross-strengthen with law enforcement or do our own internal training. Um, so those are less staff days. And then that second clinician job I have posted and I'm currently hiring for, if anyone is a clinician, um. It's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, seven AM to ten PM with overlap on Wednesdays for trainings. Um, so it's pretty decent on a coverage and that's, again, not coming from nowhere. That's a lot of the calls I saw in Solvista was like. You either get like it falls or like evening, into the evening, and you occasionally get the midnight. But that's, we have that backup fall safe of the mobile crisis teams.
Question for Chief Morgan. Sounds like this really does help you do your job.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, uh. Sixty-one thousand dollars seems like a pretty decent, uh, bang for the buck. To help you guys do your job.
Yeah, and you know, we do, like Sarah said, you know, you talk about, and I consider, you know, could we use an officer on the street more than this?
Because officers do go to a lot of these calls regardless.
But one thing that does do, like Sarah said, is, um, when it's not, um, a public safety threat or they're not in danger. Um, the officer can leave and then we're freed up to, you know, handle things in town. And again, there's so many stories I could tell, but many times without co-response. You've had people that aren't breaking the law, but were constantly getting calls on them. Because there's underlying issues of, of mental illness, substance abuse, things like that, that we are just not equipped to continue. And, and so this really provides a resource where all of a sudden we're not going to the same person again and again and again. Because they're getting the proper resource.
Is it that, that frees you up to get back to doing the other things you need to do?
Yeah.
And that's a bit of a gray area where if it's not a criminal issue, but there's still a bit of a moral obligation to help them.
Yeah, and.
And it frees you up to move on to doing the other things you need to do, right?
Exactly. And like Sarah said at the beginning, people call the police for everything sometimes. And we had a, a lady, um, right when this program was kicking off, who was having postpartum depression. So she called dispatch and they sent an officer. And there's a young officer with a badge and gun like, why are you sad? He, he talked to this lady for a little bit until Sarah got there. And that's the perfect thing. It's like that. We need an officer to make sure she doesn't want to hurt herself or something, but that's not a call that should tie up an officer. Um, so when he was able to leave when Sarah got there. So it's story after story like that.
Sure seems like a win-win. I mean, it.
I agree.
Frees you guys up to do more of what you need to do and it actually, uh, is a benefit to the people who need that type of help.
I agree.
I just did some quick math on it for the twenty twenty-four calls for BV. If you were to take the ask by number of calls, that's three hundred and twenty bucks a call. I know that you guys are doing a lot more than that, but sometimes my brain just goes that way.
If you want to know what the cost of a private practice therapist is per hour, it's about one fifty or two fifties.
That's a very good.
Yeah, and we on average spend two hours on. Just for the nine one one call. That doesn't include the, the case management, the follow-up.
And in this area, we don't have a lot of options for follow-ups. And there are a lot of areas of seclusion. And so it's nice to know that there's additional support being given and following up. And as Chief Morgan mentioned, it frees them up to continue to do their job as well. But, but we also know that that person in our community hasn't fallen through the cracks and is still, somebody's got an eye on them. So it's pretty important in my world. Very important in my world.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
No, I, I supported a co-responder program in Edgewater on City Council and do a shared by the county across municipalities. It was very valuable. Um, I think you guys are doing great work. It's proven to work. It makes sense. So I hope we can find a way to fund it. I'm excited to hear what you're facing.
I do have one question. Um, I believe that this program is extremely needed and valuable. But. After your initial visit and you're doing follow-up care. Is that, any of that able to be billed to health insurance and be covered by mental health insurance?
No, it is not. No, firstly, I don't know a single co-responder program that is billing for services. Um, and that goes for most crisis programs. You don't want to be the barrier to someone reaching out in a crisis situation. To be their ability to pay ever. So even on mobile crisis at Solvista, there is no billing for that. And that is, that is an organization that does bill for, that's how they sustain themselves, is billing for services. And so I do not see that in the future. I would really not love to send that out to people of like. Oh, you didn't ask for help, but you got it. And now here's a two hundred and fifty dollar bill. Uh, and I think there's ways to ask for creative funding around that. Um, you know, like I'm fully game to go fundraising where we need to, um, if the community wants it. And is willing to provide donations for that, that's awesome. Um. Yeah, but it gets interesting.
It's frustrating and disappointing that our federal government is not functional enough to continue to support. Amazing programs like yours, but, you know, I hope we as a, a county and a community can help to continue.
Yeah.
Continue your work.
I mean, I would love to see one day that private insurance companies are mandated to donate one percent of our profits to crisis response systems. I think that would be an incredible change of insurance and like, yeah, we're doing the work to give you the clients for free. Um, so give back to us.
Chris, got any comments? Hey, keep up the good work. Okay. Okay, um.
I wanted to stay for the budget.
We have a public, you know, stick glasses. We have a public hearing with regard to the budget. Like to call the public hearing to order.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Trustees. My memo is on page sixty-three. And just a few updates for tonight from the previous meeting and then we can open it up for, uh, discussion and then any public comment. Uh, related to the budget, but as you'll see, I've highlighted a few changes there. Uh, one. It was identified at the last meeting, but between the REC advisory board and the recreation department, they decided to. Delay the outdoor fitness equipment, uh, here at the community center and Billy Court of the Memorial Park until. Twenty twenty-seven or after. Uh, and they shifted that fifteen thousand that was coming from the general fund back into the operating portion of the general fund. Under trail repairs and maintenance, um, under Sean's budget, Public Works. That's a standing line item that's been set at ten thousand for a number of years. And, uh, if you remember, the trails advisory portion of that, uh, presentation, they didn't have a lot of new large capital projects. So I think they've, uh, identified more maintenance. Uh, so that's where that budget sits. Uh, of course, the board can repurpose that or do something different. With that fifteen thousand, if you'd like, but that's where it lives as of now. Um, let's see here, in the water fund. Couple of changes from the water team. They identified that, uh, their original capital plan, uh, did not include a fleet vehicle. But they do need one, uh, you know, the water operator that's in the budget. And then the smart meter reading system, which we have been calling Gateway. Uh, that's where we, uh, are using, well, the original idea was that we're, we're using radio towers to. Read water meters throughout town. Uh, technology has changed, uh, a bit since that was first identified. And so, uh, the water team wants to take a step back on that specific, uh, project. And reassess what current technology is out there. Uh, also that would align with our existing meters that are out deployed right now. Um, and have a little more robust of a plan around that. So, uh, Sean is looking at doing some additional infrastructure rehab work. Uh, and so repurposing that fifty-three thousand that was being carried over. From the smart meter reading system to do more infrastructure work next year. So that's the main difference, main change over in the water fund. I will call out that it's been an interesting week so far, uh. Yeah, this, as of this report, we're showing a surplus in the general fund. I do not anticipate that to be there by next meeting. Uh, revising our, our revenue outlook for, uh, based on interest rates. I think interest rates are changing a little bit faster. Um, I met with our financial advisor on our bonds today, um, and so I've revised that a little bit. It's, it takes a little bit of that surplus away. Um, and then September sales tax is coming in right now as well. So I think the next meeting will really have a good foundation of what monies we do still have available to utilize. And make some final decisions on any of these. Kind of on the board, on the, uh, on the line, uh, requests that have come in that currently aren't in budget. But could be added to budget. I think with that, we did, I did get a good bit of work with Chandra in the airport, uh, fund as well. Just kind of looking at her staffing, no, no huge changes to her budget. But, uh, I just want to reiterate the presentation from the advisory board representative. I think they're, they're looking, they're looking good, I think, going forward. Pleased at what I'm seeing come from staff and, and the advisory board there, some good thoughtful prioritization. And you, Mayor Fei, you asked for clarify, confirmation that those high priorities were in their budget. They are. The AWAS system, uh, the second phase of the HVAC, uh, assessing the, uh, fuel tanks. So all that's in there. I could go on and on, but I will pause and see if there's any questions. Mayor Fei, you mentioned that you had some thoughts on how to. Add in co-response, which, uh, on page sixty-nine, you'll see, I've, I've been tracking there. A little over sixty-one thousand was their original ask. Uh, it was kept like that because you all needed to have that presentation tonight. So, uh. Now that you've had it, you've seen that. We also have the forty-five hundred from the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission. commission on their uh event next year. Uh, so that's sitting in that list as well. And then uh you heard the additional ten thousand dollar ask this evening as well, which was new to me as of today, so that will be added to the list as well. So any questions?
Bye. I believe that the museum but does draw people to our town. I think it is important. Um, I was, their ask is ten thousand a year. I was thinking you always don't get what you ask for, but like the the baby strong dinner is real good for our community. I think that the museum is every bit as good as that. Maybe uh not the full ten, but a lesser amount to them. The co-response is important. I don't know if we will be able to come up with the exact that they're asking for, but they're willing to continue to work on with what they do get. I thought that was pretty good. I have tried to be diligent in going through the budget and comparing their the adjustments are very conservative. I don't think that, I think you've done a great job. I didn't, the year before, we had um people in here for and I didn't see it, but it doesn't mean that it's not in there. Um. Is our town still working towards ADA compliance? Is there any small steps that we could do each year to work towards that side of our, helping that side of our community? I don't, I mean, that definitely is a big help having, because those stores are heavy.
Yeah.
Um, but is there any small things that we haven't done that we could do that would would not be a major expense, but something to show that we're working for with the I mean, Sydney.
The website is kind of the concentration this year uh on ADA um kind of compliance. I want to make sure to kind of reiterate that, you know, as far as ADA um and American Disability Act nineteen ninety four, we're not out of compliance. Uh, it's just as new infrastructure is, we need to make sure that it meet the requirements. Uh, but incremental improvements where we can. And so the website is kind of the big one that we've identified this year.
And that is in the budget right now at twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Hopefully a little less, but that's the placeholder right now. Those doors are heavy.
They figure out how to get it. So that put my whole emergency bars on the right.
What?
Did they get, and figured out how they, how to get the door flipped over?
No, it's been like that since they originally installed at least these interior doors. Um, no immediate plan to or necessarily put if you get them um reconfigured.
I would, I would add uh to one other reason why. Um, well, when you're looking at co-response, I think it was a great presentation. Um, good of Chief to speak to that. It has been discussed quite a bit with the county uh in Salida and uh it it is, I would look at that as an operating expense. It's not a one time expense, but it's hopefully a longer term, uh just a three year, but it's not a capital expense. It's an operating expense. So adding it into the budget in lieu of something else. We could chisel away at our capital list to accomplish that, but what we're doing is we're shrinking our allocation to capital. So then when we get into next year's budget, our operating cost is that much higher and more than likely unless sales taxes change. You you see what I'm saying? We we won't necessarily have that allocation kind of already established in our budget for capital, so. It, just when you're looking at that and considering how to fit it in. Um, yeah, just a comment.
Okay, hold on to your hats.
I want it, yeah, I'm excited.
Uh, the street fund is funded by a half percent sales tax and has been for many years um since two thousand ten. Um, is when that ballot, that ballot initiative was passed, I think. So, um. What the ballot language says is that town sales tax, which represents a one half cent increase on each dollar. Limited in use for the purpose of designing, constructing and installing street improvements, including, but not limited to sidewalks, curbs, gutters and incidentals. And providing for the payment of revenue bonds issued for such purposes. So that's, that's the purpose of the street fund. So I'm looking at the uh capital improvements. I see bollards. I thought gee, I wonder what bollards are. And so I looked them up. I was thinking they were probably those long uh things that flip cars over if they hit them, but but no, they're those posts that go in the middle of roads and there's a whole variety of them. Um. I don't know which ones we're talking about here, but that's fifty thousand dollars that we're saying should come out of the police budget. If we took it out of the street budget, because to me, it's a street item. It's, it's attached to the street. It's for the running of the street. It's, or you put them on the sidewalk to control people. Um, but to me, it goes, it's legitimately a street item, I think.
I would agree. I think that's a great idea. It doesn't help the general fund because if you look at the way we have it, it's actually coming out of fund balance and not our transfer from the general fund. It was a fund balance and so it could eat, I think it, I think it would fit that definition. We've used the street fund for similar uh features in the past. Um.
Are there any other ones that you could see in there that could be street?
I, on that, I don't know nearly as much as the two of you, but it made me think, well, if the bollards are currently in the police, is it a capital or no?
It's general fund. It's general fund capital. Yeah. We call it police because they're the ones that identified it.
That is a really good idea, though.
But if it doesn't help, it's not good.
I like it, though.
Yeah.
It does fit the streets. I agree.
Yeah, but I'm wondering, are there any other items that might fit the definition? Because that, that um street fund has quite a lot of money in it.
Phil, Phil, your concern is this, this represents an ongoing operating expense.
But just by definition. I don't want it to make it sound like I'm against.
Going forward, we need to have the mindset that this is an operating expense, not a capital expense.
Yes.
Is it important to get that right this year? Or knowing that, hey, request, a late operating request that wasn't properly on the radar for our budgeting last year. Is it, do we need to get that in an operating expense from the get go? Or can we, um, as Libby suggested, do we have the liberty to move things around for one year?
You absolutely have the liberty to move things around. What we would end up doing is it would be an operating expense.
For sure.
We would reduce our implication to the capital fund from the general fund by that amount and we would the necessary items from the capital budget at next year to accommodate that. But what you're doing is you're shrinking that allocation in the budget. And then when we go to Form twenty twenty seven, your operating costs are sixty thousand dollars higher as a baseline. And so I would just need to be mindful that next budget cycle, um, that's going to be present. That's going to be a thing. Right. Yeah.
It's either this year or next year.
Yeah, yeah. But absolutely, if the board's like, hey, we feel like we're accomplishing the highest priorities on the capital side and we're able to use our marijuana fund and our cow, uh, our CTF funds. And and we're caught there and we feel like the co-response is high enough priority where we're shrinking. Absolutely.
Wait, but it would be an operating from the get. And if some of our other, you know, partners in the county can't do their full request this year, and we can, that's a way to help.
Yes.
Mayor, I I was looking at things on the, the public support requests. Generally, I think, you know, Cindy, I've been thinking a lot about what you said when we started talking about the budget process, which is there's must haves and there's nice to haves. And I'll just put a few out there, but I think the drone park shade shelters, seventeen thousand dollars, that's a nice to have. Versus a coresponder feels like an important part of our public safety program. I think the EDC contributions are a nice to have, but we are paying a private organization to lobby us. I'm not sure if that's necessary every year. That's fifteen thousand dollars. So together, those two are thirty two thousand dollars. And then we are paying for sixty one thousand dollars a year in JV County Community Fund grants. I appreciate that we have made the effort to fund nonprofits through the community, but we have a nonprofit program we need to fund in our own. That is our, our priority versus community programs that have private donors. So I'm wondering if for this year, we can consider essentially like cutting the drone park shade structures, cutting the EDC contribution and pulling the extra twenty eight thousand out of the sixty one thousand allocated for the CCCF grants for twenty twenty six.
I would, I a hundred percent fully agree. One of my questions was why EDC is on our list? Is there the only non nonprofit? And so I also had that question. And the recycling program, we've set this five thousand aside for for several years and it seems like that may have stalled out. And so I, I also had that on my list. Uh, and then on the adopt a tree program, I think it's great. I don't, I don't want to take it away. But did we end up with extra trees last year? Is there a way, like is there a way we could scale back a little bit or is that really, is it needed for that program?
Like seven thousand, right?
I don't want to take down any trees. Sorry, Sean, say that again.
Yeah, I think, I think some of it was just like a little bit of a um some growing things. I mean, uh, identifying trees having one in a right away that were cottonwoods, which are street made affordable compared to some of the trees that we're planting now. Uh, we did wind up with some extra trees last year, but we did find a home for them and they replaced some street byway trees that's passed away um on Main Street, Community Center. So all the trees that we purchased last year did, did get planted. Um, and it's not the best way to do it, right? And it's better, you know, the adoptive pro- tree program is really good, but I think that it's kind of hidden this and it's, it's, it's based on like the applicants that we get, like so how many applications do we get? One, I can't, we actually plant, we can't always plant trees just because people apply for it, but that'd be a good location. So it's a, it's a challenging process a little bit.
Definitely seems like it. Um, that was, I just was more curious about than anything. Um, and there was another one that oh, the park bench memorial program. I didn't, I don't recall details on that one and what that two thousand was for. Um. Is it something that we use every year? I'm not sure.
Yeah, um, I didn't know the memorial bench program is generally a boss or are are sourced by the applicants.
Okay.
Cost to, our cost is to install the bench.
Okay. And so that gets used if we have benches come through?
Yep.
Regularly over that budget.
Is, I, that was my next question is, how many, yeah, how many of those hours are we using all of them?
Yeah.
And then send, okay.
What kind of, I want to kind of repeat Philip's comment, like if we're looking to find this on page sixty six and sixty seven, then we're fact it. Ideally, this should be an operating expense within a department going forward.
Those uh correspond, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so trying to find it here on page sixty seven or sixty eight is really diverging from what Philip said. It needs to be in an operating expense going forward. So with, with, with all these ideas on the table.
Is there a way for us to put it in operating expense this year?
Yes, I, I would, I would say, but sixty eight, uh, those are operating expenses on page sixty eight. So these ideas to
Okay.
Rem, absolutely would allow us to fit co-response.
Come here and then maybe it's a release idea about the bollards, I mean, the two, we have a big pinch.
That one would.
That would change the channel.
Okay, so.
Right, is a great.
It sounds like it's something.
Some people go and stand on them.
But it sounds like something that we could do for the year and then figure out next year how to fit it into the operating budget.
Correct. Well, yeah, I you're either cutting capital to fit it in or you're fit, you're cutting back on operating. If you cut back on operating now, it's, it it's set up for multiple years. You know, it, it's, it's keeping your allocation to capital healthy. If you cut back on capital to fit it in, you're, you're, you're increasing your operating and decreasing your capital, so. I would advise not to do that unless you really have to. So I would try to cut back on operating first and foremost to fit it in.
So you're saying sixty, sixty eight is the, is, is the cleanest place to figure out where to put it.
Sixty eight would be a good place to start.
Trim some of that.
I heard that Salida was cutting back their, their amount to half a percent sales tax. They used to put in the same amount of money as we did. And then they changed to where they put the same percentage of their sales tax down. But now they've cut back that. And I don't know, I, I mean, it, I don't feel good about that.
So.
In terms of, you know, our, our organizations are already going to be struggling.
On, on that note, is there a reason why there are certain nonprofits that come directly to town versus going through the CCCF process? Can you share a little bit more about that?
So historically, the board can make a decision to say this is, uh, I think trustee Swisher uh, as an example, her statement was, I feel like the, the museum is an ongoing need.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, sorry, I misstate you, but um, uh, the board can decide, hey, this is something that's important and we feel that like it's ongoing. And so instead of that, organization having to go through with an uncertainty of what they would receive year to year, they would be called out as a line item in the budget. Um, but over the years, our allocation to, those have remained fairly constant from year to year. Whereas our allocation to the community grant program has increased from uh, when we were on the board, Joel, it was like fifteen, ten, ten thousand dollars.
To the percentage of the sales tax, which is fifty eight change after the processing.
So that has grown quite a bit over the years. Um. So it's really board decisions at moments in time to say, this is a, this organization you need is a priority for the community and we want it called out in the budget.
I fully understand that. I feel like we're kind of at the, at a similar point right now where there are a lot of nonprofits on this list. There are a few town adjacent boards. And then there's the fireworks, which kind of seem to be the kind of intergovernmental, kind of not. And, and it and we're seeing more nonprofits come directly to town to ask, right, to be on that line item budget. And so it just feels like another conversation in time of, do we continue this process? Or do we have a conversation to see where, where it's at to move to where any nonprofit has to go through CCCF, where that's just the process now. So unless you're a gu- intergovernmental agency or town adjacent board, then if you're a nonprofit, it goes to that line item. I don't know if it would be the best thing to do. I know that last year and this year, we're taking a lot of time having to parse down these numbers to be able to figure out how we can fund important things like co-response. And so I wonder if a few of these line items wouldn't be better being included in that general CCCF. And, and understanding that, yes, it is a gamble that that organization may not get that money. But again, there's the nice to haves and the need to haves. And from what everybody has shared so far tonight, it sounds like we all agree, co-response is a need to have for our community. Um. And and it looks like our list has quite a few nice to haves on it. So that's.
Yeah. I I generally agree. I think that's a process question we could talk about next year. If we want to pull, if we feel like the place to pull things is from page sixty eight, then I. I know we love our fireworks, but can't justify six thousand dollars in fireworks. At the expense of a program that's important for our public safety. And fifteen thousand dollars to the EDC and forty five hundred dollars to the town dinner. I wonder if like we can lower the fireworks to two thousand from town. Lower the BV Strong Dinner to two thousand from town and pull the rest from the EDC and then the extra from CCCF. Just because I think.
And the recycling program.
Oh, I don't know if we're using the recycling program, but I think I would feel comfortable making cuts to those things because they are important town things. But again, like. They are things that I think private donors will cover. And. The co-responder program feels imminently important to our police department, to public welfare.
So. What I think is happening and it's it's needed is because I'm hearing that co-response is a higher priority for the board.
Yes.
Not a high higher, it's it's a high enough priority that you want to see it in it. Next meeting will have a. A better idea of what available funds we might have in the general. And I'm hearing some ideas of areas that maybe are lower priority than co-response. What we could do is come to the next meeting with some ideas on. How to fit it in to the operating side of the budget without cutting back on capital. Maybe cutting back on the lowest priority of capital if we needed, but try to reserve the capital allocation as much as possible. And then the board can make a final direction at that point, so.
I think taking into account some of the comments from trustee Pike and trustee Rosenhour regarding. Maybe we have moved. Work with some of the numbers on page sixty eight.
Yeah.
I would also.
Agree with that too.
Thank you. Sorry, I would I would also like to express that I fully agree with trustee Swisher. For the museum and I'd like to see, just so we can have a complete picture. And their ten thousand dollar request in in next week's presentation budget as well, just to understand where that falls. And because I do fully agree that the museum's really important to the towns. I don't. Either pretty.
So I have a question if we could. Add into the budget. Would it? Create its own account or would it be in the department? Where would you pay for it? As an expense. A bookkeeper part of me is just curious.
That's a very good question. We could put it in the department as a professional fee. We could also call it out as a public support. And then the one fifty department, so it, so you can see it. In alignment with these, really, I'd take directional from the board on that because it's all on the general fund, so. Whether it's in Dean's budget, it kind of gets buried in there.
But I think it is a public support because it's part of a countywide effort. Yeah, it's not, it's not just confined to our police department, and I think it deserves stability.
I agree.
Ms. Briggs also mentioned, I think we just lost her too, it's about timing. She mentioned something about community fundraising for co-response as well. I don't know if in the presentation that was already an amount that she had estimated. Or.
It wasn't listed in the present.
Yeah. So. I don't know, it'd be it'd be cool to just like get a gut check from her if that's realistic and if that's an opportunity to fill some gap there as well. Like the rest of the board, I agree that this is a high priority. It's a big request too. We gotta, we gotta knock some things down. Get to it all and do it.
I did appreciate very much that we're gonna figure out how to make it work no matter what we get, and I I appreciate that spirit.
Yeah, because some of these things, I mean. You know. Fireworks and community dinner, nice to have. Yeah, but they're also a big part of bringing the community together. Um, so just be thoughtful. How we how we fill the gap.
I think we have enough to work with on that.
I I have it in Sarah, she might step back in maybe during interaction and chat with her real quick, but. I understood her talk about fundraising, they're open to doing it. I don't know that they have, as if they have, I think, we would have thought about it, so. That was my sense.
Yeah, just trying to see if she maybe had an idea of an amount that they think they could achieve. That's a tough question to ask somebody off the top.
Philip.
Yes.
Under account zero, one, three, ten, forty four, eighteen, is that, I think it's in planning. It's for a civil review for fifty thousand. What is that?
So what we did. We. That's for billing that Marika's team puts out to KLJ or or contracted engineer for development review. She she recoups that in revenue from the development applicant. So, but she, it used to all be under her professional fees, that it was all. Contracted services. But what she's doing now is separating planning review from civil engineering review for development to. Other, you know, being able to see how much are we leaning on our on our contractors for planning versus civil, but. Her team is doing a fantastic job of arranging to build that to develop herself.
Great. So there's nothing much we can do with that.
Kind of as an entry account, so revenue is offsetting the expense in that particular case.
Good eye though, that's brand new.
That's what makes it stand out.
Yeah.
He has the resume memory.
Yeah, but you'll notice the professional fees is down by the by the same amount.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to say something, but I'm not exactly sure how to say it. Our list on sixty eight. Some of these are in here because they cannot qualify to get money from them. Community base.
Those are not fiber one, two, threes.
Right, so they so, and some of these were because. That they were important and we wanted to make sure that they got this over what. Went out to the community-based organization and how they divided out. So if we're reducing. From this list, I would like to see that. What we're going to give to the organizations be reduced also. Because. Like the Boys and Girls Club, we're, the Boys and Girls Club. Does so much for our community and we wanted to make sure they got that. And they add and they help with. Whether people want to admit it or not, that's part of their after-school daycare stuff. They do a lot for our community. We wouldn't want to. Lower what we give to them. So, yes, if we need to reduce some of these, let's do so, but I would like to see that. Reduced because this is us personally picking this out and. We don't decide, I know that you'll be on that thing, because I don't think anybody was tromping over there to harm Russell.
Didn't seem like it.
But. This was us deciding what was more important and then letting them decide on the lesser stuff. I just wanted to kind of.
Cindy, do you?
That's when we started doing that.
Thank you.
Do you mean that if we remove, like, we should? I think I understand what you're saying, that like we've decided on a series of nonprofits or programs similar to what CCCF funds because they're priorities for us. So if we remove.
If we're removing from this list.
Yeah.
That sixty one thousand I would like to see reduced also.
Me too, for sure.
Noted, yeah.
Philip, as you're looking at this before the next meeting. Just some thoughts on things that were thrown out already, like. If a reduction in fireworks or even the community dinner were to lead to a no-go for those things. I would be concerned about the the impact on sales tax revenue. I don't know what happened to Leadville last year when their fireworks were delivered to Telluride. But I suspect a lot of people came down here and spent money down here that they weren't spending in Leadville. So I just, again, want us to be thoughtful about that.
I think having updated numbers next week or next meeting will be helpful to really kind of get into the meat and potatoes of the conversations.
They're starting to have another line item we could work with.
Done, I'm so disappointed.
It was a great idea.
They're starting to have an organization that's the sons of the American Legion because the American Legion is getting. The people. Moving to our community are not able to fill that. Role and the American Legion has done so much for our community over the year with supporting the Boy Scouts, what they do for. Veterans and they gave scholarships in our community and did whatever and. In, they put on fireworks just so that we would have fireworks. I do believe the fireworks display brings people. To our community on the Fourth of July. I'm not saying that you need to keep that at six thousand, but I would hate to see it eliminated. It it is. An organization that, like I said, is tries to do so much for our community, but they. Are getting limited in what they're capable of doing until the sons of the American Legion can come up and do like what my dad used to do.
Yeah.
I think trustee Rosenhour's comment about potentially reducing contribution to the EDC is also on the table. You know, very much so.
We don't see.
And why is that? Why would you say it's on the table?
Co-response is a greater priority. Yeah, absolutely.
Does it have anything to do with them being unhappy with us? You know.
I'm not, so I'm not following the question.
Oh, that the EDC was also unhappy with us.
Well, I'm just looking at prioritizing, what what is a higher priority for us, for our community, and I think co-response makes her.
Yeah, I think the EDC is on the table for me for that exact reason. And I'm thinking back to the conversation we had about. Whether we should be using taxpayer dollars to fund the local chamber. And I think the conversation we had there was pretty interesting, which was like, we don't normally fund private businesses, so why would we fund with taxpayer dollars a private business? Advocacy organization, which I think I was just thinking about that when I was looking about the amount of money for the EDC that we give to them. So. I agree that I think there's nice to have and there's must have.
Twenty five percent of the co-response request here.
Right.
Yeah, I think so as a matter of principle, it needs to be looked at. Absolutely.
This is public carry, so I've read it.
Um, I'd like to, is there anybody?
We have one online.
Online, okay.
And it looks like.
In what?
Do you want to go ahead, Thomas? All open enough for public comment. Thomas, would you like to speak?
Oh, yeah, thank you. It's bravely, as we go and look at our parks, we don't know, Joel can attest. We don't know what's always underneath those parks and what's on top of those parks. We've been after well number four. Three hundred and sixty thousand, I I don't know if we've allocated dollars for soil testing. Out in well number four, that is out in the River Park, it's a little bit further north. We don't know what's there. I I hope that you've thought about that, that you may need some additional dollars. If it already isn't built in to the three sixty K that you're giving. Sure that we don't get a surprise and all of a sudden arsenic is some odd or crazy level. So it's just a suggestion and I thought that we may need to start looking at that type of stuff, particularly in our public spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Harley?
Is it okay if I just stay here? Um, I currently went to, I live in Beadavista and I'm talking as a citizen of Beadavista and not a representative of Mark Bell anyways. I just wanted to say really quickly that I completely agree with the statements made about the EDC funding. I would so much rather. Town dollars go to a program like co-response than to an organization that basically lobbies for private businesses. It would make me very happy to see that happen.
I would second that strongly. I've been on that for years, although it was actually a year ago, three years ago.
Seems like it's fairly Salida centric.
Yeah, Betsy.
Betsy.
Hi, thanks for the chance to chime back. And I, you know, I do want to say it's a little disheartening to hear. That the trustees do not value the community grants program. And I think, you know, maybe there's some misconceptions there and just some history on. You know, when the Community Foundation started doing community grants for town. Previously, you know, it can be very political. And if you look at the organizations that were funded this past year. That's thirty two organizations and I guarantee you if if all thirty two of those came directly to a trustee meeting and requested funding. You would feel very compelled to give them all funding. And so I think that it it does create a challenge. To open that door to organizations to come directly to the trustees because. It's, these are all great causes. I mean, the thirty two amazing organizations that are serving BV residents and it's transit, it's health, it's mental health, seniors. Youth, recreation, arts, and these are all these things that are not just, you know, essential services like childcare. But also the really the great things that make BV the community that it is. Also, I mean, just thinking about your funding in the landscape of some other funding that was was suggested. You know, Salida did have to cut their contribution down to a half a percent this year. However, they did add fifteen thousand in to the Emergency Response Fund specifically for food access. And so they were able to bring that dollar back up again to support community issues. So I do feel like that should be taken into consideration. And it was very clear to me that they were only doing that because of the deep budget crisis that they're in. They had to cut two million dollars out of their budget and so. That is, you know, that that's just a difficult spot to be in and they're really struggling not to have to lay staff off. And so we were. An understanding partner in that, that the hope is that as things stabilize, they can go back up to that one percent. I also think that, you know, funding in the nonprofit sector is not good right now. It's not a a great place to be. MeTab is essentially gone. That is no longer a funding source for the community. More regional funders pots are shrinking because they're just getting more competitive as federal dollars shrink. And so I I would really strongly urge you to consider that support to community-based organizations is is not a nice to have, but really as a must have. Many of these organizations are doing upstream solutions and those solutions like. Providing youth development, providing safe spaces for people to go, preventing health issues from happening. Creates, those are cheaper to address at the point when they're upstream. Then by the time that they become downstream solutions and you're dealing with them at the emergency room or as crime or youth who now have an addiction. And so I I think that it's, it is critical funding and it it prevents a lot of issues. And I think maybe we should do a better job of of telling the stories of those organizations that get funded through that community grants program to. To help you see just the the level of impact that that has on the community. So I would just strongly urge you to consider funding them. Also, I mean, I BV Heritage is great. I've definitely met with Lisa and Suzie and I'm working to get them some funding as well outside of the grant processes. They did not apply for a grant last year through the community grants program, but when they do apply, they're very successful. Same as the Boys and Girls Clubs. I mean, they typically through that community grants program get between twelve to eighteen thousand. Um, same as the Boys and Girls Clubs. I mean, they typically through that community grants program get between twelve to eighteen thousand. And so I think that's, you know, just wanted to give you that anecdote. Um, and also I did hear a note before that many organizations couldn't get a grant because they're not a five-one-C-three, and that's not accurate. We do fund um, organizations that are fiscally sponsored, five-one-C-fours, um, basic government agencies. So there's a lot of ways to get funding. A- as long as you are some sort of entity, we can fund you. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Good clarification.
Yeah, clarification. Okay, um, y'all are part of the public back there. Have any comments? All right.
No.
No?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to continue the public hearing?
I, if, if the conversation's concluded, there's other, are there any other questions project-wise? Is there anything you want to, because we are getting down to next meeting, we want to have a good firm idea where we stand so that December is smooth, so. Any other items that?
I got one.
Anything else from the public? Okay.
Uh.
How about comment?
Yeah, I had a note as far as kind of trustee-staff interaction, but now's the appropriate time. Uh, just wanted to be aware of, I don't think it's kind of fully baked at this point, but Busting and their kind of second, uh, bus route from Crestview to Denver, BV's on that route, um, is having some conversations right now through Gunnison, uh, Regional Transit Authority, JP County, and then the municipalities, uh, as far as contributions to that service. Uh, for the second bus, I think there is probably more data that needs to be collected to really be able to provide you guys with enough information to have an educated con- conversation about it. Um, but, and another part of it is, is as we progress, you know, Salida is having the same conversation with co-response, um, and all the other ask, and same thing with the county, and so if they're not able to fund that, there's really kind of, we're not in a position to make up that difference, um, but something to keep on the radar, um.
What, what do we think the ballpark for the ask from Busting is going to be?
Probably about forty. Or maybe, no, it's down to twenty, twenty-five, I think, um. The original was basically, um, a hundred, last year was a hundred and seven thousand from Gunnison County as long as JP County matched. Um, CDOT went ahead and ran the route anyways, uh, without a contribution or agreement, but now coming back for next year to say no, one forty, one of seven, now it's like a hundred and forty-eight between the two counties, so. Um, BV share, I think, was identified around twenty, so easier than forty.
Easier than forty, easier than a hundred, so yeah.
I think the big thing, we had the conversation last year, a bit of the conversation of in exchange for, in exchange for would be reservation system.
Um, yeah, guaranteed.
Yeah, right now, um, there is no ability to reserve a, a seat on the bus. And if we're going to contribute, is there an ability to have reservations, so? We'll keep you updated as it, as it progresses.
And with that request, it would come some data?
That is kind of where we're at right now. It didn't come with data. We said we'd like to have some.
Yeah, I, I think it's, 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 it'd be responsible for us to entertain a request, looking at rider. Yes. Rider data.
So, on the radar.
Thanks.
Anybody else have? I understand what I talked about with regard to the budget. Okay, is there a motion to continue the hearing?
Just that I think we should, I think that you should look at the drone park change structures. That's all. Yep. That's all.
Okay, is there a motion to continue the hearing? To our next date, which is, um, is it December?
November twenty-fifth.
Okay, November twenty-fifth. Is there a motion to continue the hearing to November? Okay, so we got Rice and Rowe. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? If the motion passes, hearing is closed.
Continue.
Continue.
So.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now, this is the one that Jeff's been waiting for all night. Act of Compliance. I think this is just you, is it, Jeff?
Yeah, although I'm not sure if Joel had something he wanted to say. I'm not sure if Joel's in the meeting or not.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm here, thank you, uh. You know, uh, Jeff, whatever, and his team, they kind of created the ordinance as in response to a lawsuit, uh, that occurred down with the city of Salida. Um, it was settled on September eighth, and, and, uh, he spent a lot of time kind of going through, um, through all the legal matters and, um, and I imagine he's really chomping at the bit to explain.
Yeah. I, I have no, thi- this, Joel said I spent a lot of time on this, and yet this case that came uh, down from our, uh, Supreme Court, it was r- really confusing, and I think attorneys who practice in this field are still confused by exactly what the case stands for. Um, I was confused by it for quite a while, and one of my associates was, and we had to read it about forty times to think, to get our understanding of what we think it stands for. Um, generally, what the case says, I'll, I'll keep it super simple, is that a municipality like the town of Univista cannot issue a permit allowing entities to exceed the statewide noise limits. Except, um, in certain situations when the entity that's creating the noise is exempt from the statewide noise limits. And there's a lot of confusion about whether, you know, what, where the property, where the activity is occurring matters or not, and our conclusion is it doesn't matter where the property is. What matters is who is making the noise? Are they a qualifying entity? Or are they a li- a leasing licensee um, or permutee of that entity? So in the town of Salida, what happened was there is a for-profit restaurant owner that was making noise, wa- wanted to make noise that would exceed the noise limits under the statewide limits. And the town issued a permit allowing that restaurant owner to do so. And the restaurant owner said, hey, I, I'm a permutee of a qualifying entity, a municipality, and therefore I can exceed the noise limits. And Carlos Supreme Court said, no, no, this is only meant to apply to permities or licenses or leases of like a municipality or other qualifying entity. Um, when they're making noise in association with that qualifying entity's activities. So like a fireworks festival where the town issues a permit to a fireworks provider to shoot fireworks off, that's that would be the kind of permit that would be, um, that you could, that would be exempt from the noise limits. Um, like a, um, a music festival, um, sponsored by the town where um, the town allowed, you know, concert promoters or bands to play, that would be the kind of thing where there, where they would be allowed to exceed the noise limits. But just because you got a permit from municipality that says you can exceed the noise limits, when it's not associated with the municipality's activities, that, that doesn't work. And so we looked at your town code in light of this Salida decision, and you guys have a provision that basically would allow you to issue permits in certain situations to exceed the town's noise limits, which are the same as the state's noise limits. And that would violate this case. And so we crafted an ordinance after some pain. It was, I sw- I swear this is probably one of the hardest things I've worked on in a while because it was just so confusing. But we crafted an ordinance that changes your town code to basically, um, not apply the town's maximum noise limits, which are the same as the state limits, to only those activities that are exempt by this Ho- this, this town of Salida decision. So you were basically issued, you were, your code allowed you to issue permits. That would be exactly what happened in Hobbs, um, which would be just a permit to vi- to, to exceed the noise limits when exemption didn't really apply. So that's my short explanation of what we did. And your code would now be changed to get rid of a lot of these exemptions that you have in your code that aren't permitted under the, under this town of Salida decision. Um, I hope that makes some sense, um. It's not overly complicated. In the end, we're just basically changing your exemptions in your code for when the town issues certain permits and when the town's noise limits apply. So it's consistent with Hobbs. And the really fun part is I've heard rumors that there might be some legislation coming next year that would change the statute in light of the, it's the Hobbs Town of Salida decision. So hopefully what we're, we're doing here isn't all for naught, um, but we, we might be coming back to you next year, depending upon what the the new legislation says, if there is any, but for now, this ordinance brings you into compliance with the law. Sorry for the long explanation.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, yeah, so, so what that kind of means for us, um, you know, we have the special event permit process, and any kind of amplified noise requires a special event permit, so that will stay in place. Um, none of the people from previous, the previous year who had a special permit will be impacted by this. Um, so it's kind of like if you're a private business and you want a concert outside or something, and you're a private entity that's putting that on, we can't give you that exemption. But if you're nonprofit, then yeah, you can still get an exemption. So it doesn't, it doesn't functionally change the activities that are going on, um, previously. Um, we are making sure that those decibel levels are listed on the special event permit application, so people are aware of that. Um, how to measure decibel levels and things, we, we've talked to on and on about that in the past, so, but, but that is a process that, uh, the chief and company and Grant are able to to work on, but, um, anyway, just a couple little language changes, so we comply with the state. So.
Rodney? Go ahead. You got a question, Chris?
Yeah, I'm thinking like, you're a restaurant owner and you want to have somebody play outside, we can't give them a permit for that? Whereas before we could.
Well, we.
I understand that correctly.
You, you still, we never have. There was that noise permit that we've, um, may, I guess we could have, that's what happened in Salida, even though it evidently broke the law back then too, um.
Yeah, the short answer is that's correct. You, 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 they can play music outside, they just can't exceed the noise limits.
Got it.
Is, are concerts, is the law not affected?
Uh, if they're a nonprofit, they run it through the, the, uh, Savman Arts and Parf.
Yeah, that, that's kind of the silly thing about this whole case is, you know, I don't know, it went to the Supreme Court of Colorado, and then you know, ultimately, you just have to do it through a nonprofit. I mean, you know, and so it's, you know, pretty easy to get around all of this if somebody really wants to. So a lot of work for not a huge result, but that's how it works.
Legal necessity.
Yeah. Just didn't want you all to, I mean, given, given that, you know, your next-door neighbor did this, I felt like it would make sense for you all to bring your code into compliance, so.
Oh, we're looking for a motion.
I think it is a, it is a public hearing. This, uh, is in chapter seven, so it didn't have to go to the planning zone information, but, um, we should open up public comment.
Okay.
If you people have things to say.
Yeah, Joel, I don't think it actually is a public hearing, but you could certainly do a public hearing if you wanted to.
Oh. It's not listed, all right, well.
Yeah, eh, eh, a public hearing would, yeah, eh, anyways, it's, it's not, it's, but there's no harm in doing it if you want to.
Thanks, Jeff.
Sure, sure.
Any comments from the public, anyway? Okay. All right, is there further business, further discussion? Would someone like to make a motion with regard to?
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number thirteen to keep our town in compliance, yeah.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have, uh, Swisher and Hike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, yeah, thank you for listening to my complicated explanation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at trustee-staff interaction. Brought up tonight. Start with those or start with going around the room? Choices? Okay. Tom Brown brought up the idea of having a environmental advisory board. I don't think that's something that we would create off the cuff, but it might be something that we'd want to talk about with, when we get to our strategic planning type, um, meetings, you know, that take place to plan for ne- for next year, um, because it doesn't sound like a bad idea to have that. Um, but I've never started one of the advisory boards, so I don't know how intense that is.
They are in the code. I would just say that. The advisory boards are defined in the code, so it would require a little bit of that, but we've created them in the past. We created the water advisory board.
It can have like vitality, but, you know.
Vitality board in the last ten years. So.
There have been some.
As long as, that, that, you know, you want a really clear, uh, mandate of what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, there's, it's caused trouble when there's not a clear mandate. And then you have volunteers not knowing what they're doing, and staff's confused and the board, so. Good point. It really needs to be very clear what the expectations and needs are ongoing, such a thing.
That may be something we could put on our agenda for when we meet to plan next year.
Worth a discussion at that time.
I agree, and I, I, I think it's worth hanging on to Tom's document. Thank you for that, Tom.
You're welcome.
And, uh, talking to our existing advisory boards to see if there's some overlap there.
Because who's doing what or what pieces that are in there.
Definitely a lot of thoughtful comments in the document.
Yeah, all right, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Um. Andy Petrasch was making a request to talk about short-term rentals to get that on an agenda. I think our plan has been to put that on a spring agenda to, to start talking about it. Um, and the board seemed to not have an appetite for just continuing to talk about it meeting after meeting. And so our thought was to just not do anything right now with the ones that are on the waiting list. Any comments on that, questions or?
Has that been communicated?
I have communicated with everybody that's reached out, and I have provided emails to, um, multiple individuals, um, this one, um, on their latest one. Uh, Libby and I talked about a response to them, uh, again, and we can.
Yeah, I'll work on that.
Is that something that, and forgive my ignorance here, would we even be able to do that outside of the ordinance, what they're proposing?
Uh, Jeff clarified that, um, that one, another discussion similar to this that does believe it would require a change to the ordinance.
Yeah, so I think that's worth noting in whatever ordinance goes back to these folks. We're told to do things that are very simple, and we simply can't do them.
Great. And to be being on the board for a while. Um, one of our main things is once something is voted on, you might not have got your way, but you move on to other things. I do believe we said we would readdress this in the spring, and we're doing other stuff right now, um, that's part of It's part of. Mature adult living. We're moving on to something else and we'll address it in the spring.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Um, what about the question on the water fill station? From the Williams couple, Mr. Williams. What is the deal with the water fill station?
It's, it's still off. Uh, currently it's up, I think, you know, we um. Like Mr. Williams stated, he, you know, talked with me a couple of times in regards to. When it would be back on with the course of the fall, you know, summer was pretty busy. I think right now I just like to keep collecting a little bit more information and provide a little bit more of a mission statement. For, for website information, things like that, like intended use, I reevaluate, went back to look at some resolutions. But I, I don't know that this is like really appropriate to get into the weeds or into detail, but I did get. You know, um somewhat concerned when, you know, what the, you know, what the fill station is, is being used for, and I think it's been used for primary. Versus for water, and I'm not saying that's the case, you know. I don't know that, but I just want to make sure that we understand what, you know, what that fill station is for, it's, you know, it's uh construction. Well, water, uh, I heard all kinds of names when it first came into, not really too sure what, what it was for. We used to have a host bib out there where people grab water and put money in a donation box and that worked just fine. Uh, through a construction water standpoint, I think the fill station is great, I think from um, you know. We did fourteen thousand gallons in um October this year, last year we did eighty six thousand, the year before that we did a hundred and forty six thousand. So um hard to say, I can't remember what we did in twenty three, but I imagine some of that was construction, um but um. But I don't know, I think, you know, there might be people that rely on that fill station more than we know, that may have systems. Um, and not have levels, and not even in Ched County, but in, in other counties as well. And just, you know, want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're, we're identifying with intended uses for. Uh, talk with Rachel Piger a little bit about it. Uh, last week, just to kind of create some awareness of what we're. And we, we only, we only understood this because when we shut it off, we, we were talking to people, anyone's post station coming on. Um, what do you, and you know, so we asked questions, it's like, well, yeah, wouldn't, um, so just. That's, that's a part of it, I think the other part of it is, is for me, it's just like, just, I'd, I'd like to get kind of ducks in a row. Got a few schedule coming up, you know, changes on that too, I'm happy to turn the fill station on, I don't have any capacity. I just haven't figured out what that is, you know, what's to be. Um, while we're there, you know, while, while, while we're, um, but, um, but that's kind of what I'm there.
Can I ask a question? Um, water rights wise is, how can we legally use that water? Um, I'm sure that. Do you water a serious business and I'm sure that there's not to be rules attached to the use of that water and how.
Is that a question for our, for legal advice from a water attorney?
Yeah, I think so, I, yeah, I would, I would say so, I think, I think one of the questions I had when I came to this position with the fill station was, and every shot to. Uh, Redwater's team was like, um, you know, the, the credit card swipe is, is a great idea, I think that, that kind of helps things out. I think, um, the, what worries me now is like what I think I might know.
Yeah, so maybe a continued discussion. With the water attorney would be helpful. Before making any decisions about the use of the fill station.
Yeah, I think so, I think, um, you know, I think language on the website too, I think it's kind of hard to, you know, um. Kind of. Detentive state that we know in the past that, you know, there's areas that people are looking for water. And they're looking for fill stations and credit card machine, you can come here, there could be a tanker right now, you know. You know, if it was open.
And, and we have water haulers in the county. That get their water from places other than us.
Yeah.
So there are other options for hauling water in the county.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it, and I think just making it clear that, you know, it's not intended for watering. Scurfing water for people for the area outside of, um, or per, you know, we require accounts, right? For, you know, we have our blue line, we call it, where, where we can provide water.
Yeah.
For our area and um those, those um. Our water rights will allow us to provide accounts for those individuals within that area, usually they're connected to our infrastructure, right? Not a fill station though. So anyways, uh, that and, and I guess, uh, you know, really, um. Been asked our team at Public Works to kind of, you know, we get to a place where we can, you know, provide people. Better, you know, that, you know, what we want to share on the website, very, that what we want to share with the community. We're just extremely busy and just haven't, you know, I've been able to kind of get that, that's something I think would be helpful at. You know, provide awareness for water bottle fill stations within. See where those areas are and. Um, you know, and. Uh, there's, there's a, there's, there's a little, little.
Little bit to kind of get at, but I, but I, but I have a little, um, I'm a little concerned.
If the fill station is providing. Um, water for prior use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A concern. I think a concern of the county, and I just, I don't know, I, I don't think it. Maybe there's a, a miscommunication, but I don't really see the county allowing. A residential unit to be constructed and get a CO without. An identified water source, and if it's identified, you know. As a municipality, then there should be a formal agreement with that municipality that says, yes, we. We agree to the terms of this, this agreement, and I have not aware of that. Or seen one similar, so we can have some conversations with the county building department as well.
There wa- there was, uh, I think this summer, some, a small community in the valley. Might have been Blanca or Fort Garland. That had an agreement with folks in the county that did not have water supplies. To tap into their fill station, they couldn't provide that water anymore and it was ugly mess, so Sean, I think you're. You're right to, to be conservative about this, I, my recommendation would just be to reach out to Mr. and Mrs. Williams and give them a number of somebody that will. Halls water in the county, just so we can say. You know, here's your options for, for getting water and, and we're still. Figuring out our, our, how we're going to approach and manage our fill station. Cause I am, I'm pretty concerned about people relying on our fill station for their, for their water needs, for their drinking water needs.
Yeah, I think. Talking with the team and Joe in particular, and, you know, really. You know, big transient community, some kind of, you know, mission statement, you know, um. It'd be great to get it back open, um, there's a lot of visitors, um. Talked to a lot of others, talked to a lot of people, yeah, visiting the center, um. Of, you know, people in the area, like Chris and a few others, so. But it'd be, um. It'd be good, but yeah, I think, uh, yeah, just keep working on it and take, take time to. Reach out to our consultants and. Perspective.
Yeah.
Create some awareness.
Good, well, thank you. All right, um. Yeah, tomorrow there's a open house at Peak Precast. Um, you know, which is the company that's down by the airport. And they'll be making the um concrete forms that can be snapped together basically for. Bating West Homes or other, other small houses like that, anyway, there's a ribbon cutting at eleven o'clock. And tours are available from eight thirty till five, I think. So if anybody wants to go to either of those events, I'm going to go over at eleven for the ribbon cutting. Um, then uh. Question of whether, whether we should be doing something um to help with the food insecurity problems. That are looming, if not already here. Ryan, do you have a thought on that?
I don't. Think, I know, you know, Salida, um, identified fifteen thousand. Uh, got brought up right before the last meeting, the meeting was the same day as our last meeting, um, so felt pretty quick. Um, as far as myself and staff not fully aware of the ins and outs of how the program is.
Cause I think we can make contributions to the community foundation and get it matched by Salida. Up to their fifteen thousand dollar amount.
Again, I don't have the details on it to speak, you know, any type of educated manner.
I think probably if we look at the website for a community foundation, CCCF.
Um, do you think the shutdown's about to end? Could we instate staff and that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just now, right? Two hours.
But those kind of things don't happen immediately.
They're gonna have a lot more rules that go with it in terms of reporting in work requirements.
I don't think so, yeah.
Not yet.
I think so.
We do have a local organization that's trying to drive this well, and they're getting matches from the Colorado gives um dot org foundation.
They're getting matching from, from the BB Foundation?
Uh, they're getting matching from Colorado gives foundation.
Oh.
So it's a BB community aid drive and they've got boxes up all over town, so taking financial. And then all of that's going to help feed BB local.
Great, what I've understood about those things is that they would much rather get money than they would food. Because they have access to ways of buying food where one dollar will buy three meals. Whereas you and I go to the grocery store and one dollar buys you a can of beans.
Right.
So, um, so if you're up for it, they would appreciate money. And they're also looking for coats and blankets and stuff. So, um, all right, that's all I have. Evan?
Um, all trustees and department heads and uh. And all's uh appointed. Employees, I'm blanking on what you, I call you. Wayne, Philip and Paula and Brian. Um, you should have all received uh an email from me with. The documents that you need to complete, uh. Marika and Dean, that they win for getting it in first, I'm sorry, I don't have a prize for you guys, but. Prizes, you don't have to do it, you're all good. Um, so I appreciate, uh, you all for getting that in, so, um, we would like, I'd like to get them. To me, uh, by the twenty first, I think is the date, yeah, next Friday. Uh, granted, I have factored in some time, but that means that you're going, I'm going to be hounding you on that. Thanksgiving, so, um, try to get those done before then. And the mayor will be helping me uh compile those for the December ninth. Meeting and we'll have some exec sessions to go over those with Philip and Paula and Brian. Uh, if you have any questions or issues, feel free to reach out to me, I won't scold you that much. And uh. Yeah, I think everyone received them, if you didn't, uh, let me know, but I, I, I was pretty good at making sure everyone got it. Um, and on personal note, if you want to check out your local orchestra, we're playing this weekend. Uh, we're doing seven PM on Friday and Saturday, Friday at the old church in Woodville. Uh, Saturday at the steam plant, and then we're going to play uh three PM at the high school on Sunday, so. You guys are interested in that, pick us up, it's free. And we're pretty good. We'll be real good by Sunday, hopefully. That's all I have.
Thank you. Andrew?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Cindy?
I don't have anything.
John?
Uh, just a little something, um. Talking to the school, the road project, uh, didn't have a. Um, any really additional street amenities for the project, but they've been asking Public Works to kind of help with um. Some safety components, crosswalks, not really too sure, um, we're evaluating the floating ramp to see. Um, but the big thing is, is like, we just, you know, we're not going to. Build it in-house, me and Tyler could go out and figure it out, but we do want to make sure that, you know, what, what we can do to help. Do what we can do, I'm more concerned about the. Standards, you know, make sure that we get, if we do do a crosswalk that is built to, to design standards and. Good functioning ADA, this kind of stuff, so, but, yeah. So if you hear anything bad about me on that, I'm sorry. I don't have, I, I just can't, we just can't respond in a way, just because somebody wants a crosswalk, I just can't paint it. Uh, where the loading ramp is, things like that, so just anyway. Anyway, fun stuff.
Brian?
Uh, staff breakfast next Wednesday, wait for today, Mika did not respond, you can do the late shift. Turn it on. Uh, I'll see, uh, Simon's, uh, to everybody, got a last pretender email on that one. Uh, the other one is CHA, uh, Libby doesn't want to be a board member forever, so she is. Termining out at the end of January, um. Anybody on this board interested in being on CHA board?
I already did.
I'm doing grants now, I still have me five, I have time.
That's fine, um, I'll go ahead, I, I don't need your volunteer for anything. That's a good policy. Yeah, so, patients are being accepted right now, um, if there is more information on Chiffy Housing Authority's website that. Kind of lines out what, what is the board member, what's their job description, all that kind of stuff. Um, we'll interview, all interviews will be recorded, uh, it's a little more structured this year as far as. Who and how we're going to interview, so the goal would be to have a recommendation for the December ninth meeting. So if you know somebody interested.
So we don't need somebody from the board, we just need somebody appointed by the board.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
We've had kind of off and on that loose tie of Libby, you know, um, volunteered last time. Um, which was great to have that connection point, but, um, you guys do appoint both seats. That's all I have.
Great.
Thank you.
Nothing to me.
Maggie?
Nothing.
Chris? Joe?
Nope.
Chief?
No, thank you.
Ed? Um, Jeff?
No, nothing, thanks.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay. Good.
Make a motion to the grand.
Rowan Rice, uh, all in favor? Anyone oppose? Meeting is adjourned.
Hi, everybody.